John is with us on the video I thought I saw earlier in case there are any questions of him or me, I'm sure we'd be happy to stand.
Very good, items 2.1 and 2.2, very exciting economic development opportunities for us to consider this evening. Open a public hearing on item 2.2. Do we have any requests to speak either virtually or anyone in the room?
We haven't received any.
Very good, thanks. Hearing then, we'll close the public hearing, looking for discussion or a motion from JDA members.
Chairman Weber.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Bean. Someone else was about to say something?
I'll second.
And we have a second, so a motion from Mr. Bean. Who's the second from?
Weigel.
Second from Mr. Weigel. With a motion on the floor, any further questions or comments? Hearing then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Congratulations. Nice to see you, John. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Move to item 2.3, Harold Building Lease, Grand Forks School District, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Chairman Weber. This item was before you on the growth fund as well. The lease was due to be up the end of January, and we're suggesting we extend that lease under the current terms to the end of June. I'll stand for any questions.
Very straightforward. Let's open a public hearing on item 2.3. Do we have anyone wishing to speak? Close the public hearing on item 2.3, looking for a JDA member comments or a motion.
Move approval.
Motion from Mr. Sandy.
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Dockler. Any further questions? Hearing then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 2.4, Harold Building Lease, Hub Edge LLC, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you. Previously, we had agreed to terms with Aritonomy in the space, which is 1,293 square feet on the second floor. In discussions with them, there's actually going to be two entities that we're going to lease to, so we're actually going to enter into a lease with two LLCs, one being Hub Edge and the other one, Aritonomy. So due to the additional LLC, we did need to get the approval for that lease as well with them. So with that, it's a pretty simple deal, but we are recommending approval on this. I'll stand for any questions.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Brooks. Fairly straightforward. Any, we'll open a public hearing on item 2.4. Does anyone wish to speak? Hearing then, we'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Weber.
Looking for a motion or comments from JDA members.
Chairman Weber?
Yes.
Dana Sandy speaking. I have a conflict of interest on this item, and I'd ask to be recused, please.
I'll make a motion to recuse Mr. Sandy.
I'll second.
Have a motion for Mr. Weigel, second by Ms. Dockler. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We have a recusal for Mr. Sandy, looking for a motion on the item.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Weigel.
I'll second that, Chairman Weber, Mayor Bochensky.
We have a second for Mayor Bochensky. Further comments or questions? Hearing then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 2.5, Ms. Richards, Corporate Center 2 Lease Proposal, Kitsona.
Thank you, Chairman Weber. Your staff report walks you through Kitsona's history. They have been a tenant in Corporate Center 2 since 2013. Their current lease expires at the end of this year, and so Tessa Heine, the principal of Kitsona, has submitted a request for a new 24-month lease. Her proposal includes an all-in rent of $2,000 a month and a proposal to pay the arrearsage, which is approximately $54,000 of past due rent plus about $53,000 of deferred rent at a rate of about $500 a month. When this was discussed at the Growth Fund Committee level, there was discussion about the need to review financial information from Kitsona that had not been received at the time of the Growth Fund Committee, but it has since been received by the city attorney. At the Growth Fund Committee, the discussion was to establish a subcommittee that would help with the review of that financial information and the negotiation of lease terms. It's recognized that this is a very important discussion and some precedent-setting concerns as well. So again, the motion was to establish a subcommittee to assist with it and in the interim to renew their lease through January on the existing terms to allow that subcommittee and subsequently the JDA to come to a decision. We do have a schedule for that subcommittee meeting, excuse me. We're looking at meeting Thursday of next week, so that would, hopefully then, we'll have a recommendation from that committee back through the Growth Fund and then the JDA in January. I believe we perhaps have people interested in speaking to this item, but I would certainly stand for any questions before you open the public hearing portion.
Any questions for Ms. Richards from JDA members before we open the public hearing? This is a difficult time for retail in Grand Forks across the country, around the world in many ways, was before the pandemic, and that's been made worse by the pandemic. But with that noted, we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to item 2.5 on this evening's agenda? Anyone wishes to speak, please come forward, give us your name and address. Nope? We have no one at this time, Ms. Richards?
No one is coming forward, Mr. Weber.
Very good. With that, we'll close the public hearing and looking for a motion or discussion from JDA members.
Chairman Weber, Mayor Bochensky here.
Yes, Mayor Bochensky.
Well, I think it's important to note that this is the, you know, this proposal is from Kitsona and hasn't really been vetted yet, and that due diligence will be done in the next couple of weeks and looking for a solution on here. I know we've gotten a lot of feedback on this, and we're going to do our due diligence. This is part of the reason that my lease campaigned on getting the city out of these types of situations so we don't have them to come up in the future. With that being said, I think the recommendation tonight to get the subcommittee makes a lot of sense on extending the lease under the current terms just for another month until this can be completed, I think is necessary. So I'll definitely move to approve it.
Very good. We have a motion from Mayor Bochensky.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Kavami. And I'll just quickly, the subcommittee consists of the vice chair of the Growth Fund Committee, and Mr. Kavami, thank you for your willingness to serve on that task committee. Any further questions or comments about item 2.5?
Mr. Weber?
Please, Mayor.
Actually, this is Dana Sandy speaking. Does Kitsona still own or in or have a second, its original property on Kitson Avenue?
I believe that their Corporate Center presence is their only physical store in Grand Forks today.
I thought when we had renegotiated this previously, and again, maybe my history isn't right, but I thought that they had, when they were expanding, they moved into the Corporate Center, but were keeping their previous location for their online sales.
They did have a location for kind of a home goods branch on South Third Street that has since closed and is now occupied by Sea Dick Run. Their original location was on Kitson, but they haven't had a presence there for quite some time.
I see, okay.
They do have a storefront in Fargo.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further from Mr. Sandy or anyone else? Hearing nothing, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 2.6, Sea Run Loan Request Round 1, Mr. Hanson.
President Weber, members of the authority, I'm here to present the Sea Run applications for the new EDA revolving loan fund. In your staff report, there's figure 1.1 with a summary table of the applications. The EDA invited the Growth Fund or the JDA to apply for 1.39 million in CARES Act dollars to be used as disaster assistance loans. Some key elements of this is that it's meant to alleviate the sudden and severe economic dislocation caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. These are disaster assistance loans, they're not grants or forgivable loans. By their very nature, they're riskier in being disaster assistance. These revolved funds will stay to support our economic development long-term, and any unused funds will be returned to the EDA by June of 2022. These loans, the minimum amount that can be loaned out is 5,000, the maximum is 50,000 per applicant with a 1% interest rate and a standard six-month deferral that's amortized over 66 months or five years when you include the deferral, in addition to the deferral. Personal guarantee, that was determined on a case-by-case basis based on the business's collateral available, their debt service coverage, age of the business, management experience, as long as a few other overall factors to determine the overall risk of each loan. Nonprofits by their very nature are exempt. There is no owner of a nonprofit, so there is no personal guarantee required. As far as the application process, the Small Business Development Centers assisted applicants or prospective applicants in applying for the funds. They worked many hours with those individuals, and then staff reviewed those applications when they came in. Staff then worked with SBDC and the applicant to ensure completeness of the application, that we have the information needed to make a decision. Then they went to review by a committee made up of the Small Business Development Corporation or Small Business Development Center, the Economic Development Corporation and the city. They reviewed the entirety of the applications, including collateral, debt coverage, management, personal credit when required, and also took a look at the COVID impact on each business, other federal assistance, or maybe lack of availability for assistance for some of them, different circumstances and their path to recovery. Each application had a recommendation of whether or not to approve the loan, the maximum amount to approve for, whether a personal guarantee is required, and then other conditions to help them set a strong foundation for recovery, such as whether they need to continue with coaching from the Small Business Development Centers. We, I wanted to put a note in here that we appreciate the EDC and the SBDC's support. The SBDC put in many hours per applicant, helping these applicants go through this process. There was no primary lender on these loans, so a lot of that work was divvied up. They put in hours preparing the applications, and they also provided critical insight in the credit analysis piece of this process, and they've committed to working with applicants going forward as well, free of charge. And as we know, business owners don't always work nine to five, so I know Greg Syrup with SBDC put in many hours on weekends and after 5:00. The applications had a thorough review by the SBDC, EDC and city staff. We are presenting these applications together, and things have also changed since October when the deadline was originally set. At that time, the Midwest wasn't necessarily a hotspot for COVID, and we're looking at a, the timeline, we're looking for approval is hopefully by the end of the year because the money is certainly needed now. You can see in your staff report, there's a few figures there that go over the COVID-related financial impact overall. You can see the total incurred and anticipated financial impact for these seven businesses is over $2.1 million. And the other point I'll make too on figure 3.2, the Sea Run program will account for about, on average, 25% of the assistance that these seven businesses will receive, so it's pretty critical to them and their operations. Staff is recommending approval for the seven loans in figure 1.1 for the maximum amount shown with the conditions shown, and the Growth Fund Committee concurred with a recommendation on their meeting on November 23rd. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Hanson. Any questions for Mr. Hanson before we open the public hearing? We'll open the public hearing on item 2.6. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? Hearing then, we'll close the public hearing on item 2.6, looking for comments, questions or a motion from JDA members.
Chairman Weber, I'll move approval.
We have a motion from Mr., I believe, Mr. Weigel?
Correct.
Is it Ken Bean, I'll second it?
I'm a second from Mr. Bean. Any further questions or comments? Hearing then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mayor Bochensky.
Have a motion from the mayor, and Ms. Dockler quickly seconds. Meeting is adjourned. Reddick, do you need a moment to switch things over to the council meeting now? We'll be reconvening in a moment for city council.
Call to order, Grand Forks City Council meeting, Monday, December 7th, 2020. Candace, can we get a roll call?
Weigel?
Here.
Dockler? Weber?
Here.
Here.
Mac?
Here.
Kavami?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Bean? We have a quorum.
Here.
Thank you. 1.2, Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to this republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to be, justice for all.
All right. 1.2, Mayor's announcements, got a few announcements today. We just got to see the first glimpse of the governor's budget last week, certainly some challenging times with oil prices falling. We're going to stick with working on that grade separation on Demerse at 42nd, so that's going to be our big legislative push. We'll be discussing that further later on this week, actually, I think tomorrow. And on that topic, I will be going out to Bismarck quite a bit during session and helping to push our agenda forward. I got out to Public Works a couple of weeks ago. They're getting geared up for snow removal. They're probably getting antsy, they haven't had to do much of it this year. I got to learn more about salt brine than I would ever have thought I needed to in my life. I do know, for those of you out there that complain about it getting put out ahead of time, now, they put it out there because that's the pretreatment. Not only does it help with the snow that falls, but you can think of it like Pam before you, some sort of vegetable spray before you cook eggs, and that helps you scoop the snow up and saves on the cutting blades. I also learned about pavement temperature, so even in the winter, we're going to have a handful of degrees warmer on the pavement, so they take that into account, not just the air temperature. So really want to thank those guys for hosting me out there. And then I got to go over and light the Christmas tree right on Demerse there as you go up the bridge. So the Listen Center was out there and did a good job hosting a very small event, but we got the tree lit and it worked. So that was great, and it was fun to be a part, so thank you to Listen Center for setting that up. Lastly, we've been working with a handful of people, with Abdirisak, Hamzat, Gopika, on arranging some ESL classes in City Hall and trying to use that space. I think it's a really important economic driver and a route to employment, especially in manufacturing. You need basic English skills to be able to get a start in a lot of those jobs, so I see this as a real great way to have the city help out. I think Abdirisak and some others are here and would like to speak briefly on the subject, so if you guys want, go ahead and come up to the podium. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, hello, thank you. My name is Migrey. I am with New American Integration Center. I work in the office there, one that we spoke with Mayor Bochensky about maybe creating more chances for new Americans, new residents that haven't learned the language yet. One of the, one of the things I do in the office is I work on, I work a lot, trying to send people to work, and it's, whether it's Simpala, Elam, or even through Kelly, a lot of times what we're running into, they're being sent back because of a language barrier. So we wanted to see what the city council, what you as mayor, what you could do to alleviate that, that pain. And that's about it.
Sounds good. No, that's, I think everyone can agree that's a good, it's not going to cost a lot of money, but we've got space and we've got the resources, so we're definitely going to continue to work with you guys on that, and we'll have some follow-up with council members throughout the week, and we'll continue.
No, absolutely. So we did want to see if there is a chance we could, we did bring a lot of people today. They wanted to meet the city council and the mayor. If there is any chance to speak with you guys directly too, they're more than welcome to do that. You can meet us at our offices or contact Abdirisak or me, and we can set up a meeting between you guys.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for setting that up. Thank you for coming up and speaking.
Yeah, thank you.
Two, awards, presentations, appointments and proclamations. 2.1.
City of Grand Forks and UND Accelerate to Industry and Workforce Traineeship Briefing.
Mr. Bean, please.
Mayor Bochensky, members of city council, right on cue workforce development. So we've been, to be frank, the city of Grand Forks has been a real leader working primarily with UND on workforce development. We were the first to develop programs, working on internships that others have followed. We were the first to create a pathway to work on research with UND, on practical research. And what we've been working on is how do we expand that envelope? And so we're back with you today. And as you all know, the JDA is going to be a partner in the Nissler School of Business and Public Administration as part of a Workforce Development Center. Number two, we're working on the Grand Forks Herald building as a tech accelerator, and in that facility, we're going to have two classrooms along with the boardroom. And hopefully by next week, we receive word that we get the EDA construction grant, otherwise, you know, my heart can only be broken so many times, so hopefully that doesn't occur. But really what tonight is exciting because we know whether it's at Nissler, whether it's at the Grand Forks Herald, we need to do workforce development, not only for the city of Grand Forks Inc. itself, but for the broader community. And so what we've been doing is we've been working with Chris Nelson, who is the Associate Dean of the UND Graduate School, and there's a program in which we help partner fund a graduate student to put, to put further research. In this case, we really want to do pragmatic research, and so we have had a graduate student work on curriculum, workforce development, so that when we complete the Nissler School and we have our workforce developments, and when we complete the Herald, we have programs, we have ways to move forward with workforce development, not only for the city but the broader community. So that's what we're going to do, to program, program, program. One thing is the space, the other part is the program. And so this evening, I'm going to hand it over to Chris Nelson, and he's going to introduce our graduate student. She's made some terrific progress, a nice gal to work with, and so this is your five-to-10-minute briefing update where we're at, and there's more work to be done. So with that, I think Chris is online along with the graduate student that's going to carry us through, and I should also give two more shout-outs, Mayor, sorry. Tangi Bolvat, our HR director, and Haley Rosasen, and they've been, from our HR department, have been doing a great job, not only for the city of Grand Forks, but trying to create programs for the broader community. So I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to them too. So with that, Chris, take it away.
Thanks, Todd. Thank you, Mayor Bochensky and city council members, for the opportunity to briefly speak with you today. I've been very pleased with the work we've done with the city of Grand Forks to place so far two PhD students in traineeships. These traineeships are designed to benefit the city by providing what we might call some targeted research and development assistance on a particular issue or area of concern. For each traineeship, the PhD student works with a city supervisor and a UND faculty member or administrator to tackle the research project, propose a solution, and ideally assist with implementing that solution. At the same time, this experience provides our PhD students with much-needed applied research and professional workplace experiences that assist in developing their career goals. As it turns out, these traineeships have also proven to be an invaluable pilot project of sorts for our new Accelerate to Industry initiative, which seeks to benefit industry partners by providing targeted, low-cost workforce development opportunities while also providing applied research and professional experiences to our students. I want to say that I'm very grateful to the city for their work with and support for us on these initiatives. Now, to the actual work of the presentation, which of course I'm going to hand off. This will be handled by first-year PhD student Cameron Holtz. She's been working with myself and Haley Rosasen on a research project designed to ultimately provide an upskilling curriculum to city and area employers and employees. Cameron is in UND's Counseling Psychology Program and came to UND from Michigan. We're very pleased to have her working with Haley and I on this traineeship. Cameron?
Hey, I'm going to share my screen, and we can get started. Okay, so again, my name is Cameron Holtz, and thank you so much, Chris, for the pass-off. So the pandemic has changed the local and national economy, and so this has created and accelerated the need for upskilling the local workforce. So the primary goals of this traineeship is to diversify employee skill sets so employees can be promoted from within and help the Grand Forks community to meet the needs of the new economy. So my role primarily is to develop upskilling workshops that employers can utilize. So the need for this traineeship was made clear in a survey in which 35 local employers participated in, and they identified a need for employees and applicants to have more advanced skills and soft skills, so things like time management, as well as communication, professional writing, applied mathematics, critical thinking and leadership abilities. So the workshops we create will be focused on these topics so we can meet the needs of our local employers. So as far as the workshop structure goes, the workshops will be half a day, followed by a homework assignment for participants to complete, and then another workshop where they will receive direct feedback. So then the workshops will be taught twice a month, and then, so different topics for different months. This will create six months of classes during the year, a six-month hiatus, so we can update the workshops based on employee and employer feedback. So in the fall, we developed a follow-up survey, which we sent out to the two employers, and it was about workshop logistics, so timing, how long they want to be and budgets. And so again, the workshop structure that was on the previous slide was based on their feedback. And then this semester, we also developed course objectives and outlines based on the employer needs. So again, this was soft skills, communication, professional writing, applied mathematics, leadership and critical thinking. And then we also sent out a call for curriculum writers through a micro internship offered to graduate students so they can have applied experience. So the next semester, so on December 21st, I will be picking curriculum writers, and I'll supervise them over break as they begin to write the curriculum. On January 21st, the first draft of the curriculum is due and will begin revisions, so by mid-February, revisions will be completed. In March, two facilitators will be picked for each course, and they will be one graduate student and one professional in the field, so there's a mix of teaching knowledge and professional know-how. In April, we'll run trial runs of all of the workshops, and in May, the workshops will be completed and finalized. So this is a community-based program, so we have relied heavily on the support of our community. So despite the pandemic, despite the pandemic, we have continued to collaborate with the university, the city of Grand Forks, and John Onkin, who run a similar program with True North. So the goal of this is to make the program applicable to private and public sectors. And so as far as feedback goes, John Onkin liked our utilization of graduate students, the workshop topics, the idea of homework and direct feedback for participants, and the co-facilitator idea. So thank you. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions or comments from council while we got them on?
Hey, Mayor. Dana Sandy speaking. I have a comment and a thought. It was nice to have the young men, the new Americans come to visit with us and to discuss their need, or at least their request. It was a quest for English training, right? For people that are having trouble, difficulty getting jobs, those sorts of things. I don't know how much need there is with that community in our, in our town. I do know that the University of North Dakota no longer has an English as a second language program on campus, and so international students that want to come to UND but don't meet the minimum English requirement can't actually come here. They have to go somewhere outside of Grand Forks, Chicago, I think St. Cloud has a program. They need to go somewhere else to get this training done before they can come to the University of North Dakota. What I do know is the pilot students from Japan and specifically the Koreans that used to come here 30 to 40 at a time per year are no longer coming to Grand Forks because they can't get their English instruction here, and they all paid And they all paid approximately $2,000 a month for that English instruction prior to starting their flight training. I would suggest that the University of North Dakota has a great opportunity if they can get some students that are new Americans in our community to be part of an English instruction program, even if the city of Grand Forks has to help subsidize the cost of those students. And then U N D starts its own program so that it can capture those international students again. I think it would be a nice mix of people and give, it's a great way for the city of Grand Forks and the University of North Dakota to work together on a program to fit a need for both citizens of Grand Forks as well as for our university. I know that they don't have this program anymore because I know that it closed, the company that provided that education in our community was having financial problems because of the reduced numbers of Saudi students that were coming to Grand Forks. Either way, I think if the city of Grand Forks were a little bit invested and the university were a little invested, I think you could put together a program that is actually a moneymaker for U N D and meet a need for us. But of course, there's some work that will have to be done on the university's side. So I'm happy to help work on that with U N D, Mayor, or if you wanted to do that either way, I think that's something that would be really good for our community. And thank you for the presenters today. Cameron and Chris, we really appreciate everything that you're doing for our community.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Sandy, thank you. I think looking at the Workforce Center and the Nissler Building could be a great place to launch that idea from. So we've got, you know, a building that's right on campus, so we could do that. But let's, if there's any other questions for the group that's on, otherwise we'll move on. All right, well, thank you, guys. We appreciate it. All right, two point two.
2020 Transportation Projects Overview.
Got Alan Ed, going to handle this one?
Ed's starting out.
All right, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for this opportunity. It really is a pleasure to be able to come here and talk about the great work that your engineers are doing for our residents here in Grand Forks. This evening, we have a series of maps. If I could get our booth to maybe put them on the screen for us, we'll walk you through the work we did in 2020 and then what we're proposing be done in 21. So this first map is the Streets Program, the work we accomplished this year for our transportation network. Anything in red consists of anything from a fog and scrub seal to a mill and overlay, concrete reconstruction. And it's pretty impressive when you look at the number of streets and the number of businesses and homes that had the roads in front of their land improved through our projects. The green stars represent sidewalks. Purple squares represent miscellaneous street improvements where we maybe replace some concrete panels or curb and gutter that's broken up. And the orange dots represent A D A panels where we are bringing existing A D A curb ramps into compliance for those with handicap who require that service. So 2020, although we had some challenges, still have some challenges with COVID, we pulled off a very solid year execution-wise. Well over $20 million executed to invest in our infrastructure this year. And like we typically do, we leverage funds from a variety of sources, through state and federal partnerships, through our Fund 4815 Streets and Infrastructure Fund, and from special assessment districts that are created. On the federal side, a couple of our highlights, we were able to mill and overlay University Avenue, Fifth Street, a good portion of Fifth Street north of De Meers, and do a significant concrete panel replacement on North Washington Street. In sum, these leveraged about $7.5 million, brought it into Grand Forks, and allowed us to improve these streets. So we're always proud of that work that can be done with our federal and state partners. In our new developments, we provided street infrastructure and utilities for a number of residential and business developments, to include our Edgewood Village area and Southern Estates. That infrastructure is mostly in place. We have a few carryover things to next year, but we're proud that we were able to get that work done this year. One item that is very important to us is the half percent sales tax that was implemented in 2018, and that provides us funds to repair degraded roads, whether that be crumbling asphalt or shattered concrete, cracked slabs. In 2020, that amounted to $3.1 million, and we're proud to say we had a very robust program. We were able to mill and overlay $1.2 million of roads. That touched a lot of citizens in several neighborhoods across the city as far as improving their streets. We were also able to reconstruct South 12th Streets, several blocks of that, 36th Avenue South, and about $800,000 of miscellaneous repairs. And miscellaneous is all the dots and squares and various symbols you see up on that map that really impact neighborhoods and touch people. So we're very happy for that. We obviously encourage continued development in that area with the full $3.1 million in future years. I did want to follow up on our fog and scrub seal. We presented this past spring as a little bit of an experiment. We have done fog seal in the past, but not scrub seal. And we're proud to say that we were able to accomplish nine miles of fog and scrub seal across town, and that enables us to have a cost-effective way of extending the life of asphalt pavements. So rather than a more expensive mill and overlay project, we're able to extend that life by a few years and get better value for our dollar. So I'm going to move on to the next map. This is what we're anticipating for 2021. And I'll work from the upper-left corner down to the bottom of the page. In the upper-left, we're going to be proposing the paving of Oscarville Business Park. This is about a $5 million investment. There are virtually no developed streets out in that area, and this will provide concrete paved surfaces for the businesses out in Oscarville. On Gateway Drive, we'll have a federal-state partnership to mill and overlay Gateway Drive from 55th Street out to 69th Street. If you've driven that recently, you've probably noticed that that is a pretty degraded section of asphalt, and we're glad to get federal and state funds for that to help us. Moving into the downtown area, we'll be reconstructing a portion of North 3rd Street. Again, a federal-state partnership, another $4 million. We'll be reconstructing a portion of North Columbia Road, $6.4 million. So you see a trend here. This is going to be a good year coming up in 21 as far as improving the infrastructure here in Grand Forks. One thing I would like to point out, Fifth Street, my cursor's on just south of De Meers, we'll be milling and overlaying that. That'll be one of several areas that we're going to mill and overlay this year. What's unique is this is a granitoid street. So some of you may be familiar with the historical aspect of that, and we're proud to say we've been working with the Historic Preservation Officer and the State Chipo to get permission to improve that street. So we see an opportunity to make some improvements in a part of town that historically has been inaccessible due to being on federal register, et cetera, for historic pavements. Okay, moving south a little bit here, my cursor's on 24th Avenue South. We've identified a two-mile stretch of concrete pavement. If you've driven that, you probably have noticed the tire slap on the panels and seen cracked panels. And there's a lot of good pavement out there, but it's just not quite what we would like to provide our citizens. So we're proposing a concrete panel replacement, followed by a grind of that concrete pavement, which should greatly improve the drive quality of that and extend that pavement out to the end of its useful life. Going a little bit further south, on 36th Avenue, we have another federal and state project to improve the traffic signals and realign turn lanes, $7 million investment. Whoops. And getting to the southern portion of town, we have a number of residential developments that we will be supporting in 21, to include Curry's 11th and King's U 8th Neighborhoods in this general area. In addition to a little bit more work in Edgewood Village, and we'll be kicking off a $3 million E I S study for this 47th Avenue Interchange Project. So those are just some of the highlights on our Streets Program. We look forward to a very, very busy year in 21, and hopefully another year where we can improve the streets for our citizens here. So with that, I will turn over to Mr. Grasser for the second half.
All right, thank you, Ed. Just a quick, before I get into this, the actual complete map of the 2020 projects is on our website. And as we get farther and farther into 2021, we'll actually produce a full map of that. Believe it or not, all these projects are not the complete list of everything that we've done throughout the year. I'm going to touch a little bit on the, some of the electrical components here, and then, again, some subdivision work that we did in 2020. Again, enhanced by our sales tax dollars, I'm going to point out some of the magenta on my drawing, it may not come across that way on yours, but Columbia Road and some of the subdivision work out here. We're dedicating dollars to go through and upgrading the electrical wiring, feed points, and L E D lighting on some of these areas that have old wires. Some of these wires have been in the ground for 30, 40, 50 years even, and so we're trying to increase the reliability and efficiency of those areas. So we should be getting those. I think we've all traveled Columbia Road where we've got stretches that are dark, and we should have that solved now. One of the bigger things I was going to talk about, you're going to see scattered all over here is a bunch of orange lines and things. What that is, in 2020, we did, we put a lot of fiber optic in the ground. And what we're doing with the fiber optic is we're connecting our communication systems in with the school beacon program. And we're going to be combining that with a federal project, which you'll see on the 2021 projects. Again, leveraging local dollars, state and federal dollars onto projects. What that'll allow us to do is communicate with those flashing school beacons. We'll get in new lights, push buttons so that the pedestrians can push the button, and it'll actually work any time of the day or night. And again, new wiring, it'll allow us, right now, we can only program in a very limited number of events into those. So when you have an early out, or we have, you know, Blizzard Day or something like that, we don't have the ability to go through and program those things. This will allow us to do programming right from our central intelligence location. The other one I'm just going to point out real quickly here are some subdivision works, mainly pond-type activities. They're just, you see four areas circled there in red. The top one is the Oscarville area. If you remember, we put in a pump station, a pond, and stormwater pipe up in that area. We'll move on to paving in 21, as Ed talked about. Down in the southwest corner of town, we talked about the Opportunity Park. Again, a pond expansion, some storm sewers in there, getting ready for some additional paving. The area circled there in the red on the bottom, bottom right, again, is the Edgewood area. There were stormwater ponds and things that went in there, underground piping, again, paving and things last year and some coming in this year. And then just a general circle downtown, just lots of activity going on downtown without listing out everything that's going on. Oh, I did miss a traffic signal down here on the bottom. We did, again, a traffic signal project down here in the bottom end of town. This is the 21, and I'll run through those again real quickly. You see all that series of dots? Those are the school beacon upgrades that we're going to be going on this year with the federal dollars. Again, you see some of the magenta areas and whatnot. Again, a large subdivision area that we're going to be upgrading, lighting and feed points, things like that. We do have two traffic signals on the docket here for this year, one on Washington, one on 47th Avenue South. Mr. Lieberman mentioned down here in the south end, we do have a couple subdivisions, some roadway, roadwork extensions and things going on there. Coming up here, we have Vale Circle. We're anticipating that we're going to make some progress on Vale Circle this year. I don't want to jinx it, we had some, what I would call encouraging conversations in regards to some FEMA money out there, meeting some cost-benefit ratios and things. So I'm optimistic, hopefully optimistic, that we're going to be able to bring some funds in there to address that. If you remember, that's the area we had that real extensive flooding last fall. People with their basements flooded out, things like that. And then the last one, again, just a general circle downtown, lots of exciting things going on downtown, different kinds of buildings and things that we're just coordinating with. And again, we'll keep populating this map as we go through 2021. So with that, are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Grasser?
No, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Two point three.
COVID-19 update, Altru health system update.
I'm going to just preamble real quick before Megan takes over. You know, anyone that's been paying attention can see that the case numbers and the positivity have gone down. We've only had one day in the last 10 that we've been in double digits for positivity. So I think that's a great sign. Four of those days were less than 5%. We know hospitalizations and other issues are lagging indicators, so hopefully we'll start to see those numbers come down as well. So it's really a thank you to the Grand Forks community for, you know, for engaging in safe behaviors, and need to continue those safe behaviors while also continuing to support business any way that we can locally. So continue doing that. I want to give a special thank you to the Air Force nurses that are in town helping out Altru. They came in over the holidays and probably going to work on doing something a little bit more to give them a nice Grand Forks welcome and a send-off at the end. So I want to give a special thanks to them. Ms. Swans will have an update probably next week on the vaccine. They're working really closely with the state of North Dakota. They've got the logistics ready, they're just waiting for the vaccines to get here. The state's not getting a whole lot at the start. It's only looking like 8,800, so it's going to take some time to get the quantity, but they'll be ready to go. With that, is Megan online? We can hand it over to her.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. So I just want to give an update. It's been a couple weeks since I've been here to just share kind of where we're at. And as the mayor suggested, there's really good news, it's pretty consistent with what the rest of the community is experiencing. So there's just a couple things I want to cover. An update on really what's going on on the inpatient side, a bit of what's going on on the outpatient side, some information about where we're at with our infusion center since we opened that a few weeks ago. And then just a follow-up on a blood bank conversation and question that was raised a couple weeks ago. So I'll start with the inpatient and staffing data. So we've got good news to share. As I had reported a couple weeks ago, when we were at our peak, we were sitting around 45, 46 inpatients, along with the other non-COVID positive patients that we had in the system. Since there's been lots of good work and some action taken to support bringing those numbers down, we've seen a steady decrease in the number of positives in the health system. So today, we have 17 COVID-positive inpatients. About 12 of those are on the general care units, and five of them are in critical care. So the one other thing that I think is worth sharing because it's good news, and we certainly appreciate the support that we're getting from the D O D. Having the nurses there has been a great resource for us, and it's helped us maintain a better level of service than we were able to provide before they were there. So we, too, are seeing a decrease in the number of employees that are being excluded for COVID-related reasons. So right now, we've got 72 employees out or excluded from work because of COVID, and at our peak, we were well over 150. So that, too, is trending in the right direction. One thing I might mention is we're in the same place as it relates to vaccinations. We're expecting those to come soon. We haven't seen them yet, but working through what we... We haven't seen them yet, but working through what we, what we're calling our priority list. So focusing on those that are on the very front line and, and backing up into those that may be exposed to COVID positive patients while they're in the inpatient units and on the outpatient side as well. So our goal, depending upon when those vaccinations arrive, is to get at least that first round of employees vaccinated before the year is over. As it relates to some of the outpatient or the hotline curbside data, what I did was just take a look of, a look at the week of 11/30. So not this week, but last week. And we've seen a nice steady decrease in both the hotline numbers and the curbside numbers as well. So the total number of curbs, or excuse me, total number of hotline calls was 912. And instead of the, the weeks get a little bit wonky because of the break. So I took last weekend compared to this weekend and you can see there's a pretty significant decrease in the number of calls that were coming into the hotline. So last weekend, we experienced 517. This weekend, just under 300. And at our peak, we were well over 1,000 calls per day. So that's, that's really indicative of, of us moving in the right direction. I'd say the same goes for curbside testing. We, we tested 978 last week. So I, same thing, I took the weekend numbers just to give you a sense of where we're at. Last weekend, we tested 269. This weekend, we tested 179. So I, I pulled the, the peak in where we were testing the most. And there were a number of days in early November where we were testing over 400 people a day through our curbside. So that too is good information and, and good indicators that we're moving in the right direction. So the last thing that I'll just share is that of the curbsides, of the testing that we've done, we had 254 COVID-19 positive cases. So we launched our infusion center a few weeks ago. Since then, we've treated 25 patients in that outpatient treatment infusion center. So there's really two different types of treatments available. And there's several others and every week we hear about new ones. And so we continue to monitor that and sort through how we can move and use those in our infusion center. So the monoclonal antibodies, so that's an antibody developed in a lab that, that is used in the infusion center. So we've received a small allocation through the federal government, one so far. And so we're, we're monitoring that and hoping that we continue to see those allocations come on a weekly basis. But so far, we've, we've received one small allocation. So using those for those that meet criteria that we developed consistent with what the CDC is recommending. And then the other antiviral medication that's offered at the infusion center is remdesivir. So those two are what we consider sort of your, your typical outpatient treatment options. There are many other things that our providers use as well, but that, that might be interesting information. And, and again, back to what I had talked about a couple of weeks ago, these treatment options allow us to, one, keep patients from being admitted if they're kind of right on the bubble as to whether or not they need to be. And then two, it also helps us get patients that would otherwise need to be in an inpatient setting out a bit faster. So that's not everybody, but if they meet kind of those right criteria, we can move them through the system a bit faster and get them home, which is usually where they'd prefer to be. And then I know Mr. Sandy had asked a great question a couple of weeks ago and I had an answer for him as to where to go to donate blood. But he and I had a follow-up conversation and I just want to share a few more specifics. So there's a couple of different things. There's convalescent plasma, which is something that people hear a lot about in the news and are hearing that there's a strong need for it. And I think there is. The, the places to donate convalescent plasma are fairly limited. In fact, there isn't an option in Grand Forks to donate convalescent plasma. You'd have to go to Fargo to do that. So we, we receive our convalescent plasma, we use it at Altru, but we save it from a large blood bank in St. Paul, Minneapolis area. However, we do still really need red blood cells to be donated. So that can be done at the Dakman Blood Bank. And I just added their website down at the bottom, just so that the information is there. But I did clarify that with, with the blood bank, just so that people kind of understand the difference. So there's a, there's a need for sure for bu, for blood products. It's just that the convalescent plasma is a much more complicated domination process and requires different equipment and technology, which is done in, in larger labs. So that was the last thing that I wanted to share, but I want to open it up for questions if anybody has any.
Questions for Ms. Compton? Mr. Weigle?
Just real quick, and, and this might not even be a question for you, Megan, but what is Altru doing to support their, their frontline workers? Their doctors, their nurses, people that are, are taking care of patients? And I'm just curious what Altru's stance is and what they're doing to take care of their workers?
Good question, Mr. Weigle. Do you have like a frame in which, which you are asking the question, just in terms of vaccinations or time off or PPE?
Just a little bit of everything. I mean, I know as the city of Grand Forks, we implemented a policy right away that if an employee contracted COVID, that they weren't burning through 80 hours of sick leave, they were getting paid to be here. My question is, is, you know, they're, they're working hard, but are, do they have some of those protections as administration at Altru taken some of the precautions to, to keep employees not so much happy, but to, to take care of them in, in a physical way, in a mental way, in a financial way if they can?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. That helps. We certainly, you know, recognize that all of our frontline employees are in a really tough spot and trying to manage the best they can. Especially as we saw those numbers increase, we recognize that our, our nurses and our physicians, phlebotomists, those that are really on the front line, were, were burning out pretty quickly, right? So a couple of things that we have done, we've pulled staff from the outpatient environment into the inpatient environment to work alongside the DOD nurses that came as well, just to, to give some support and to relieve some of those staff from having to take the patient loans that they were taking or to give them some breaks. So that's one piece of it. But I think to answer your other question, as it relates to what do we do for the employees that maybe have contracted the virus or otherwise? So if, if they've contracted it at work, they fall into a category of workman's comp and we cover that to make sure that they're compensated for their time while they're not here. If they've contracted it outside of work, many of them have been able to move into positions where if they're feeling okay, we can put them to work in a different kind of way. So they could work from home. Or if there's a, there's a individual in their home that has contracted it and therefore they have to quarantine, provided them some different ways to still be able to work while, while they're not able to physically be here. So those are a couple of different ways, but we continue to look at that as people, to your point, burn through their PTO or their paid time off, that we find ways to, to work creatively with them, to prevent them from getting to the end of the year and not having any time off. So looking at all kinds of ways, it's a good question and I have probably 20 minutes worth of information to share and I'll, I'll leave it at that. But I do appreciate the question and certainly can share more if it's helpful.
Thank you. I think that's great, great to hear. Any, any questions online? All right. We'll move on to Mr. Doolitz.
Thank you, Mayor Bochenski and members of the council. My name is Michael Doolitz. I'm the Open Response Project Coordinator and I'm pinching as the data analytics leader at Grand Forks Public Health. Just going to provide you a quick update looking at our dashboard. I again get to share good news today, which I certainly appreciate the opportunity. When we look at our new cases, we are still very much on a downward trend, even with that one day change in new cases. We are still on a downward, we have had a slight decrease in the number of tests completed, but I still think, you know, in context to the number of new cases, that our percent positivity is still, you know, at a relatively, you know, sufficient manner. Looking at our percent positivity, that is down and our percent change in COVID cases continues to be on a very strong downward trend. When we look at our COVID cases by age group, we are now seeing, you know, pretty universally, the decrease is kind of falling all within the same kind of pattern as what the community is seeing. Last week I discussed, or the last time I had met, I discussed the 80-plus age group as being one age group that we haven't seen the decreases. Fortunately, we, you know, when we look at the 60-plus age groups, when we break that down by 10-year groups, the 60 to 69 age group is actually down into the orange. The 70 to 79 age group is on a strong downward trend. And we have now seen the 80-plus age group starting to trend down as well. When we look at our incidents, early in November, you know, we were making some predictions that were pretty dire, looking at the number of cases that we would be looking at. The last time we had doubled prior to, or recently doubled was the 28th of, the 28th of October. We have actually doubled again as of last week. So, you know, just like 80, 200 cases total since the start of the pandemic. So it took 35 days to add on another 4,000 cases, whereas before it would took 39 days to add on 2,000. So again, we saw a lot of, a very large increase in the number of cases. Fortunately, when you look at the top of that curve, it is starting to, it is starting to bend rather than looking like it's moving up exponentially. So taking a closer look at that curve, this is, you know, where we're at as of today. Early in November, I've given you a couple of predictions that looked kind of like this. So we are looking at exponential increases in the number of cases. We are looking at potentially, you know, by Christmas having, you know, having over 18,000 cases in the community. You know, those predictions are based off of the trajectory we were looking at at that time. Fortunately, things have changed and our, our trajectory is changing quite significantly. So when I look at the projections lately, so last week, the projection is the yellow line. So that's where we would have, based off of the last two weeks of data, that's where we're, that's where our trajectory was pointing. And actually, the green line is where we're at as of today. So we keep seeing that slope of the line decreasing, which is a positive, you know, certainly a very positive, you know, outcome that we're seeing right now for the community. That said, you know, if we want, you know, if we follow the, you know, the guidance of the Harvard Global Health Institute in their, their guidelines for preventing future outbreaks, we want to get our case rate below roughly 25 cases per 100,000. And that's actually a higher rate than what the White House Coronavirus Task Force recommends. And to do that, we would have to have our curve looking about like the teal line, the ideal projection that I put on there. So we do still have some progress to be made with the kind of rapid pace that we're seeing with the case numbers decreasing. I think that could, you know, could be very within the realm of reason of happening before the end of the year. Looking at our case doubling time, as of today, I, I actually forgot to change that number. Our case doubling time is actually above 100 days right now as of today. I believe it was approximately 110 days for our case doubling time. So it's been increasing pretty, pretty readily. Unfortunately, because of the higher incidence in cases, you know, to get, to get to the point where we would be at, you know, less than, averaging less than 17 cases per day, which is what we would need to be, less than 25 cases per 100,000, we would have to get closer to like doubling time of like 300 days. So we'll, you know, that has the potential to happen with the decrease that we're seeing in cases. I expect this number to go up pretty significantly over the next few days. And again, going up is a good, in this circumstance, because it's an estimated look at how long it would take for the case count to actually double based off of the data in the last 14 days. Looking at our cumulative deaths, you know, this was an area where I was, you know, fairly concerned last week that we hadn't seen any type of slowing. We are now seeing a little bit of a slowing in the number of deaths in Grand Forks County. And actually, in the past week, you know, we have seen a very strong decrease in the number of, of deaths that have unfortunately occurred in the county. So again, this is a metric that is slowing and is giving us an idea that this outbreak and some of the after effects are starting to slow down. And again, if we use that same kind of methodology of looking at the doubling time, we are up to 73 days and we have had 48 deaths since the start of the pandemic. I just wanted to touch a little bit on hospitalizations as well, kind of confirming, you know, what Ms. Compton had mentioned. We have seen a decrease in the number of hospitalizations in Grand Forks County. And when we compare that to our peer counties in the state, we have seen a marked decrease compared to the other communities in the state, which I think is another positive kind of sign for the community of Grand Forks. And I think that is just another example of, you know, maybe some of the positive outcomes that have been coming from our strategy. Finally, I wanted to compare how we're doing in Grand Forks to some other states. It's easy to compare within the state and I provide those comparisons on a daily basis. But when we're looking externally, we have some interesting kind of controls when we look at other states and provinces near us. So, you know, Manitoba and Minnesota have had, have taken very strong mitigation efforts. Manitoba, you know, up to, you know, even having like a shutdown. Minnesota having, you know, shutdown of some crucial industries. And then South Dakota has had a very hands-off approach when they look at their, when, look at their COVID policy. So looking at the number of new cases, we've been seeing decreases across the board. Manitoba's kind of leveled out. Minnesota's been following kind of the same decrease as North Dakota and South Dakota. That said, their number is a little bit more in flux because they report their numbers by the date of the specimen. North and South Dakota, when we look at the new case average, it's roughly equivalent. The caveat with South Dakota is that their testing program is, is, is nowhere near what North Dakota's is. So their test per capita or their testing per 100,000 population is significantly lower than, than North Dakota and their percent positivity still remains quite high throughout the state. But when we look at the other, you know, kind of latent effects, the number of deaths, South Dakota is still very much on an upward trajectory with the number of deaths they're seeing in the state, whereas North Dakota has started to dip down. Manitoba and Minnesota are still relatively high. Again, they don't test as much as we do, so they may have some cases that they potentially are not seeing as well, even though they have opted to take some more mitigation efforts. When we look at hospitalizations, again, South Dakota is seeing, you know, higher rates of hospitalizations. They started to go down and then have had a, an increase again, you know, roughly coinciding with about the past week. So North Dakota's starting to go down. Minnesota's starting to show some signs of going down, but that remains to be seen. So, you know, we've, have a very promising trend right now. So, you know, here, you know, I have some thoughts on what may be causing it. Again, you know, these thoughts should be, you know, equated to hypotheses, you know, made based off of, you know, an educated guess, looking at the data. You know, certainly don't, you know, don't hold me absolutely to it, but some hypotheses for what we are seeing. We have seen less travel over the Thanksgiving holiday. Mr. Schill, who's presented to the council before, has brought up, using the Google smartphone analytics data, that data was showing less movement in the Grand Forks area over Thanksgiving, you know, the Black Friday, that weekend timeframe, which, you know, did kind of show that we were, you know, potentially having less movement as a community. We've also had, you know, the state has also, you know, mentioned to us that they, you know, and we've been providing, you know, data to the state related to Thanksgiving gatherings during our contact tracing efforts in Grand Forks. We had a, you know, relatively low number of positive cases saying that they were at Thanksgiving festivities. Thanksgiving festivities and of the, while they were positive. And of those that were at Thanksgiving festivities while they were positive, a strong majority of them were at Thanksgiving festivities with like less than five people. So the number was under 35 cases that were positive while they were at a Thanksgiving festivity. And with that smaller, you know, with smaller gathering sizes, that does bode well for us, you know, not seeing necessarily the same kind of post, post Thanksgiving increase that we've seen potentially with other holidays. And then finally, looking at our mid-November interventions. So, you know, those being the mask mandate started here and then adopted by the governor, the early closure of establishments that may have been at a higher risk for spread, and then moving schools online. You know, it does look like there may have been a, you know, an impact from those interventions, but it also kind of coincided really quickly with the time when we had a decrease in cases. So it's, it'll be hard to show definitively that there is one, or one, you know, one intervention was the thing that changed everything, but I think it did certainly have a factor in this. So, you know, one of the factors that I think is maybe, you know, kind of underconsidered is reducing the number of incidental exposures, particularly those exposures that are less than what we would call kind of high-risk exposures that we would actually quarantine someone for. So those exposures of less than six feet or less than 15 minutes or less than six feet for less than 15 minutes. And those non-mask contacts, I think, you know, by, you know, maybe making some of these changes, we did reduce some of the incidence of some of these kind of incidental contacts that we wouldn't necessarily pick up during the contact tracing process. And we were also seeing an increase in the number of community spread cases. So I think, you know, mixing those together, I think that does kind of lend some credence to, you know, the value of the interventions that we did take. And then one other thing I did want to mention is that, you know, a potential explaining factor for this could be increased immunity in higher incidence populations. So when we look at, you know, particular groups, for instance, that, you know, may have, you know, may have taken more risks or, you know, in, in more situations that were higher risk for, you know, COVID spread, you know, there may have been, you know, there may be more, you know, potential immunity in those populations. And so, you know, there's less chance for, you know, individual spread in between. You know, that's the one that, you know, you know, that's kind of the, you know, the potential or the hypothesis that I don't have the best data for. You know, it, it's just, you know, a potential way of looking at it without, you know, kind of looking at a lot of those external factors. So bottom line, looking at our SWOT analysis again, I think, you know, I was happy to write these slides today or put together these slides because I could have a lot of strengths on here. So we've seen that continuing downward trend in both new cases and percent positivity. Our case growth, gross has, case growth has slowed and is dramatically decreasing the slope of the case incidence line. We can finally say that the hospitalizations and deaths are starting to decrease. And then we've been seeing the decreases in cases in all age groups rather than having some where we were still having some problems with, you know, with COVID spread. And, and then finally, we, you know, we have yet to see a major impact from Thanksgiving. You know, we're starting to get kind of at that point where it's, you know, at the point where, you know, we can be pretty close to comfortable in saying that we haven't seen a major impact from Thanksgiving. And then finally, looking at our weaknesses, we have been seeing a little bit of decrease in testing in the community. That's probably really more related to demand than, you know, than supply. So there's probably less people looking to get tested at this point. But we are also seeing a fair number of individuals starting to use antigen testing. So testing performed at like Horizon Lab in downtown Grand Forks. That, you know, that testing is a great option for some individuals, and it's been a great way to boost the testing capacity in the community. But antigen tests don't get reported out the same way as other tests do, and they get counted differently by the state. So, you know, our case numbers are actually slightly higher when we consider in antigen tests and, you know, our number of tests completed are slightly higher as well. But, you know, but the way, you know, the way the state kind of provides that data, you know, kind of fitting within federal guidelines, you know, we, we don't necessarily see all those antigen tests. That said, one of the opportunities that we're seeing coming up is, you know, increasing our testing through the use of antigen tests. The state has received a lot of binax, what we call binax now, antigen testing kits, which use, you know, a little card and then, you know, a person gets their nose swabbed, they put the sample in the, in the little disposable card, and then, you know, like a nurse reads the results in 15 minutes. So the state is exploring and has been exploring for some time now how to increase the access to that binax now testing, and they're starting to get closer to the goal line. And then the other antigen testing option I already mentioned that we're seeing locally is through Horizon Lab in Grand Forks. And then finally, looking at our threats, our case rate still does remain high. You know, the, the trends are really good, but our case rate does still remain high. We're still higher than that 25 case per 100,000 threshold we want. We want to get that below 17 new cases on average per day in Grand Forks County to get below that 25 per 100,000 threshold. And so we are still, you know, we are still looking at, you know, based off of the, those previous 14-day projections, we're still looking at if, if those kind of held true, we'd be averaging about 77 cases per day. So we want to keep seeing that, you know, that case growth decrease. So, you know, we are making a ton of progress, but, you know, we still, you know, I still hope to see our numbers continue to go down as well. With that, I'm open to any questions, and I have included additional slides that are attached to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Doolitz. Any questions for Mr. Doolitz online, folks? All right, any other questions? All right, Ms. Mock, please.
Mr. Doolitz, are you encouraging people to get the antigen testing done, or is that just for personal information for individuals?
Councilmember Mock, I would, I would certainly, you know, encourage individuals to consider the antigen testing as an option for, for COVID testing. You know, I just mentioned that as another opportunity that's available in the community. You know, we also have lots of free opportunities available as well through the UND testing events, as well as, you know, other community testing sites such as, you know, Altru, Spectra, and my ally, Health. So, you know, some people would, you know, do prefer the antigen testing. The advantage of the antigen testing is that you get results much quicker. You know, with the binax now, it's within 15 minutes. With other antigen tests, it's, you know, like within an hour or so. So, you know, some people do find that very advantageous. You know, there is a slight decrease in the sensitivity and specificity, so the, you know, the, there's a slight increase in the chance of a false negative or a false positive. But in general, they work pretty well, and we can be pretty confident in their results. So, you know, I think it's certainly another, you know, another tool to have in our toolbox.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yeah, Mr. Veen, please.
Yeah, so I don't know who's best to answer this thing, but, this question, but I'm really encouraged about the vaccine that's coming forth and the, and the benefits that that would bring, but I'm also concerned about the education that may be necessary on, on the vaccine. One of the questions I have is, there's different vaccines that are being manufactured. I'm not for sure what the differences are, which ones we might get, and if we should do some additional education so we can encourage people to be educated and hopefully participate in vaccination process. So, is somebody could maybe talk more about that?
Yeah, we got Ms. Swanson here. I know she's going to do an update next week. Certainly, when we have more doses, I think that'll become important. Right now, with only having 8,000, 100 doses in the state, it's going to take some, some time to have those masses. But Ms. Swanson, you got something to add?
Sure. Mayor Potchinsky, members of the council, Mr. Veen. We actually did hear that we will be getting more doses of the Moderna vaccine than previously thought when that does get approved by the FDA for its emergency use authorization. So there will be a few more doses. And then following those initial allocations, there will be weekly allocations. We do plan on providing quite a bit of education and actually, because Altru is a referral hospital and will get doses first for their direct care staff, they've already started to do some education on the two different vaccines that are in process of authorization from the FDA, both about their safety as well as their efficacy. Fortunately, both of these vaccines are showing really strong, positive results in both of those, both their safety and their ability to prevent not only COVID disease but serious COVID disease. So we do plan on providing quite a bit more education as the vaccines become more available. We're just waiting for that final authorization before we roll some of that out. We also want people to understand the process by which they will become eligible to receive the vaccine. There's lots of tiers and phases as well, so we'll provide some of that information next week to the best of our ability. But feel free to reach out to me anytime if you have additional questions about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Are any other questions or comments? All right, we're going to move on to three, public hearings and second reading of ordinances. 3.1.
Public hearing and second reading of an ordinance relating to growth fund modifications.
All right, let's open this up to public comment, public hearing. Is there anybody can imagine? All right. Before I open this up, I would just like to say, you know, as, if this goes through, and I expect that it probably will, that I think Vice President Mock will do a phenomenal job. Got a ton of confidence in her. I think she's a great example of a working mom and still making the time to, to be engaged in the community. So I'm, I'm pretty excited. I think it's a great opportunity, and I'm excited to see what she can do. So with that, I'm going to open it up to any council comments, motions. Mr. Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'd like to give a round of applause to our city attorney. I don't typically praise attorneys very often, but in this case, I think Mr. Gostad did a very good job of capturing the essence of the discussion that we had at the previous council meeting. Not only that, he recognized that there would be a timing issue with taking on two new members of the growth fund, and he managed to draft the ordinance that took care of those issues for us. This new ordinance, as proposed and previously discussed, does, does a lot of things that I believe were discussed by the council and raised as concerns over time. This does provide a level of distance between the chair of the growth fund and the JDA chair. It does increase the growth fund membership by two, which is what many people on the growth fund and others in the city council have been hoping for, to bring in some additional expertise from outside of the small numbers of people that we've had in the past. I think it also elevates the vice president to the position that it deserves. It's, it's a forward-facing position. The vice president of the city council in Grand Forks does a lot of heavy lifting in terms of helping foreign policy for the city of Grand Forks, as well as is involved in a lot of the internal discussions. And I believe that having the vice president have this forward-facing position towards his or her constituents, I believe, is important. And personally, I have the utmost confidence in Ms. Mock. She is somebody that puts in far more time and effort than most people know or are doing in their own lives, because if they were, there would be a lot more people volunteering and serving in our community. I think Ms. Mock deserves a lot of credit for what she does for our city, and not only that, she's very nice and I like her. She's a very good person. So with all of that in mind, Mr. Mayor, I will move approval of the ordinance as stated.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by President Sandy and a second by Mr. Weigl. Any other questions, comments, anybody online?
Yeah. Mayor, I have a comment. I appreciate all the, the strong comments and strong recommendations, especially about Ms. Mock and the work that she does. I think she's, some maybe sometimes could be underappreciated. I know I certainly appreciate her and the work that she does, and I think certainly a benefit and, and value to the city of Grand Forks. But I disagree, I guess, with the thought of consolidating this position with our current position. I, I really do think there's value to spreading some of this leadership out amongst the council members and not just consolidating it into one. And I think the spreading, it just brings more, more of the city council people into leadership positions, and it's just overall of value to the, to all of us to have that diversity that would happen. So what I'm saying, I, I'm disagreeing with that. I'm not, it's not about the person. I just think long-term, it's about the position. And, and if there's disagreement about that position being the same, being duplicative of some sort, I think we can resolve issues just through the election process, that when we, when we elected our leadership, we can choose who we want. Obviously, we voted that way. And so I'm, I'm, I'm probably, well, I'm not in favor of the consolidation, although I do support the rest of the, the rest of the ordinance change that we've got here. But I just want to make sure that I get that point made across to the whole council. And I don't know if there's others that feel differently or the same. Again, it's, it's not personal. Having it consolidated is maybe in some ways an easy fix. I, I just don't think it's the right one. So that's, that's kind of my discussion. I'd like to have more discussion on that. I'm, I'm actually willing to make an amendment, but I think, thought it would be worthy of having more, more discussion first.
Sounds good. This is a, a second reading, so this would have to be just voted on up or down, yes or no, and we would have to go, basically start over on the ordinance, that's my understanding. Is that true, Mr. Gostad? We can't really make an amendment to this at the second reading?
The way I read the statute with respect to amending, it's, you can amend it between the first and the final reading. And we had a first reading with, and during that amendment, or first reading period, we had an amendment that was documented here, and I appreciate the comments from Vice President Sandy about the drafting of it and, and, but that's my understanding is, is we're at the second reading point, so it's time to vote with respect to the ordinance as, as presented.
Thank you. Ms. Mock.
One of the concerns that I had when some of this initial conversation started, it seemed that there were people who were concerned about there being the ability for someone to hold the JDA chair as well as the growth fund chair. And it seems maybe through this solution, well, currently, that wouldn't be the case. It doesn't actually include that in the ordinance for the future. And so I'm a little concerned that we may have taken, this would maybe solve that issue for now, but going into the future, it wouldn't necessarily prevent someone from holding both of those chairmanships. And I guess that's perhaps a point that I'd be interested in discussing because I currently have not been a growth fund member, but the way this is written, it's not precluding somebody from being vice president and JDA chair and a growth fund member and potentially growth fund chair as well.
So true, Mr. Gostad? It would be in the sense that if the vice president of the council was a growth fund committee member, only the, those three council members that are on the growth fund that are from the city council could be elected as the chairperson of the growth fund committee. So there is that chance that that could occur, where the vice president then by operation of the First Amendment is the chairman of the JDA, is also then appointed to the growth fund committee, and then is elected as the chairman of the growth fund committee. So there's that possibility that could occur.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Sandy, please.
Mr. Gostad, it is a fact that although the president of the city council nominates the three members for the growth fund committee, the membership is voted on by the city council. the membership is voted on by the city council. So if the membership of the city council wasn't interested in having the vice president as part of the growth fund or to ensure that that person isn't the chair of the growth fund, the council could vote not to approve the vice president as part of the growth fund committee.
And that's a fair statement and a good catch by the president of the city council.
All right, any other comments? Any other comments online? All right, we're going to move to a vote. Now, since this was broken up, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Weigl?
Yes.
Ms. Dockler?
No.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Aye, yes.
Okay. Ms. Mock?
No.
Mr. Kavami?
Yes.
Mr. Sandy?
Yes.
Mr. Veen?
No.
All right, motion carries four to three. Thank you. Four action items. I think we have at least 4.6 we're going to pull quickly. Was there any other action items that council members wanted to pull?
Mayor.
4.15, sorry, yeah, 4.15, yeah, we're going to have to do that as well. Otherwise, we'll look at consent agenda on 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, 4.11, 4.12, 4.13, and 4.14. Can I get a motion? Got a motion by Mr. Sandy, a second by Ms. Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry unanimously. 4.6, Tangi.
2020 holiday hours.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky, Council President Sandy, and members of the city council. I bring before you today the annual approval of the four holiday hours for employees. These holiday hours are traditionally sponsored by City Council President Sandy and are supported now by Mayor Bochensky. In addition to the holiday hours, in 2019, Councilmember Weigl introduced the closing of city offices at noon on Christmas Eve to allow employees to spend additional time with their families. These hours were greatly appreciated by city employees and very well received. It is Councilmember Weigl's intention to seek approval for these Christmas Eve hours yet again this year and is supported by Mayor Bochensky and by City Council President Sandy. I am available for any questions related to the holiday hours or the Christmas Eve closing, if you have any questions. But I would also like to, on behalf of city employees, thank the mayor and city council for these hours and the recognition of all the work performed by city employees.
All right, thank you, Tangi. We have any comments from council?
Move approval.
Got a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Mock. Mr. Sandy, do you have a comment?
Certainly, second. I think, I don't mean to speak for Mr. Weigl, because I'm sure he can say this better than me, but as someone who gets to interact and work with many city employees, whether it's in settings like this or whether it's when there's some water issues on the south end and Ms. Parvy shows up to a meeting or whether it's when Greta sets up neighborhood meetings and puts in the time, there are too many experiences that I have with the city employees who are always there, always ready to lend a hand and help out. And I believe providing an extra four hours and a half a day is the least we can do, Ms. Councilpeople, to say thank you for all the hard work. And there are too many people to name, but it's all the other people that are doing all the work every day that I personally owe a debt of gratitude. So thank you to all the city employees.
Yeah, certainly, if there was ever a year, this is deserved, in the middle of a pandemic and all this, just stepping up to the plate that the city employees have done is just phenomenal. So. Any other comments? All right, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. I think that'd be a tough one to oppose, so that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tangi. All right, we've got a little bit of a unique situation here. 4.15, Candace.
Discuss the pending litigation of the East Central Regional Water District versus the City of Grand Forks, United States District Court Case Number 320-CB208 case.
All right, now I'm going to look for a motion to go into executive session for attorney consultation regarding this litigation pursuant to North Dakota Century Code 44-04-19.1 and 44-04-19.2. Could I get a motion to that? Motion for Mr. Sandy, second by Mr. Veen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. As part of this process, I'm going to state the time. Actually, let's list the names. I'm going to ask anybody that's not listed here to step out, and I'm going to ask Greta to turn off any other people sitting in the waiting rooms or connected. So right now, actually, you're going to have to leave it on here, Greta, while we list the names of the people that are going to be here and the time. And then you can go offline after that. So myself, Brandon Bochensky, Danny Weigl, Katie Dockler, Mr. Brett Weber, Ms. Jeannie Mock, Mr. Kyle Kavami, Mr. Dana Sandy, Mr. Ken Veen. Also, we have Todd Phelan, Melanie Parvy, Al Grasser, Mark Walker, Maureen Storstad, Sherry Lundmark, Candace Stern, Dan Hanson, and Greta Seleski in the back, as well as City Attorney Dan Gostad. And the time is 7:14, so we'll be beginning executive session now.
All right, now we're leaving executive session 7:57 PM. So we'll move on to number five, informational items. Information items, 5.1.
Statement of changes in cash balances as of October 31, 2020.
Thank you, and 5.2.
Portfolio management summary as of 10:31:20.
Thank you. Now, six citizen comments. Any comments online? Or anybody waiting through all that? Can't imagine. All right, citizen comments closed. Seven, approval of minutes and bills. 7.1.
Vendor list and engineering estimate as presented.
Motion to approve. Motion for Mr. Sandy, a second. Anybody online want to throw a second in that hasn't had one yet?
Oh, second.
Mr. Weber, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post, same side. That motion carries. Mr. Phelan, number eight, city administrator comments.
We have a local government advisory committee. So thanks Council President Sandy and Vice President Mock and Mayor. So we're going to have four projects briefed on Thursday. We're hoping to get recommendations, and those would go to the next committee of the whole and to the city council to move forward with those recommendations and also set the public hearing. So just so you know, those are happening on Thursday. And Mayor also, and Council President Sandy, we probably put on the cowl. Also, we need to move forward with the declaration, the emergency declaration, extend that. It will be on there also. So we'll have some pretty big items if things go according to plan this week to the committee of the whole and then the final city council meeting of the year. Maybe Council President Sandy. Generally, we haven't done the last call meeting in December and just pushed all those items to that first meeting in January. If that's okay, we'll proceed that way if you're okay with that as council president.
Yeah, what's the date on, what would the date on that be? The 28th.
28th.
Yeah, good idea, Todd. Thank you.
So, but the next call meeting in the city council will have a lot of items on there to get through before the end of the year. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Nine, mayor and city council member comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments?
Just real quick, just want to say thank you to Detective Buzo. He was with the Grand Forks PD for 12 years and moved on to future endeavors. So thank you for all the service and everything he's done for the citizens of Grand Forks.
Thank you. Ms. Doppler, any comments?
No, not tonight.
Mr. Weber.
Nothing, Mr. Weber.
Mr. Kwame.
No, thank you.
Mr. Veen.
Nope, nothing.
All right, Vice President Mock.
Thank you to all city staff and employees for all their work this year. I think it's important to do those holiday hours. And one thing for the future, I guess, not right now, but in the next coming years, I would like to work on plans to help with the sales tax for roads. That is supposed to be a temporary tax. So I think it's important that we start transitioning to how we can improve those roads and that maintenance now, but also what the plan is for as that rolls off for the second half of that tax.
All right. Thank you. President Sandy.
Good idea, Ms. Mock. I'm going to be a little bit self-serving right now. For those of you who don't know my day job, I work at aviation at UND. And we also have a campus in Mesa, Arizona, which is right next door to the terminal where Allegiant flies out of Grand Forks. So any snowbirds that are going in and out of Mesa, Arizona on Allegiant, they would see our facilities right there. We, this week, opened up a COVID rapid screening center because we have to screen our international students. And so we offer rapid COVID screening directly across the street from the terminal in Mesa. If anyone is interested, whether they're going or coming back and wanting to get tested, it's literally right across the street, and it's very easy. And people, if they're interested, can go to sunraytesting.com schedule an appointment. But don't do it because I'm telling you.
Sounds good. I guess it leaves it to me. Just want to thank everybody for their hard work, and city staff certainly deserves that time. And thank you for all their hard work. So with that, looking for a motion to adjourn. We got a motion by Mr. Weigle and a second by Ms. Mock. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same side. We are adjourned.